He puts like all the key things.
Okay Brian, it's your turn to convince us that you need this money real bad.
Okay. Well, if you look outside, it should be obvious, right? Soil and water conservation, and that's what we're all about.
Absolutely.
So those of you who don't know me, I'm Brian Spasser. I'm the board chair of the Soil and Water Conservation District of Vince Pitstick, district conservationist for the United States Department of Agriculture.
Do you have a second page here?
And I'm Tara Westler Henry. I wear two different hats. I'm an associate board member, but then also I'm a state department of ag employee as well, so.
You mean you're important?
I think so. My mother told me I was.
Don't believe what your mother told you.
Did you pay checks?
No. It's a volunteer job for the Soil and Water.
I hear that. But anyway, guys, we won't take long because I know the commissioners are waiting and I know they're way more important than us.
Oh, I wouldn't say that.
I think you guys know our mission. It's to get conservation on the land. And it's important, it's important in what we do to not just conserve the land, but also improve our water supply. So we do everything from education to demonstration to, and actual actions to make that happen. It's an important role and it's so important. Now, we used to have a full-time employee and we are actually the only county office that does not have a full-time employee. So we used to have a full-time employee that afforded us the ability to get someone out in the field, to help foster practices to conserve the soil and the water way back in, I guess, 2010-11. That was eliminated. I know things have changed and things have changed for us. We're more active. We have more programs, more projects.
More accountability.
And more accountability. So the big change in the budget, if you guys have looked at it closely, is we're asking to restore that full-time employee. We've been doing a part-time program, sharing between Union County and Fayette County, and to be quite honest, it's hamstrung us. It really limits our ability to do what we need to do for this county. And so we're asking to restore that position to a full-time position. So if you look in there, that really is the only big change in the budget. I mean, we tweaked a few things, but for the most part, if you go through here for supplies and all the other generic stuff, it's pretty much the same. And what we ask for is really not a lot compared to most of the budgets, a small amount. But I think it's critical for our mission and for this county that we have a full-time position.
When did you cut out that full-time position?
Say that again.
What year was it that you cut it?
I'm not 100% sure.
It was during the budget cuts when the offices were getting cut, so like in 2010, 2011. We found out through the newspaper article. We read the newspaper and said they were cutting Soil and Water. I'm like, what?
Maybe right after the financial crisis, you know, when real estate valuations went down and so the assessed values went down and therefore revenue for the county went down.
So the position would be housed at the USD Service Center. Your internet's taken care of, your computer's taken care of, all that, the building, all that computer, copy machine, everything's taken care of. And that's where the position is housed. It does require a federal background check with that position.
Did you put that, ask for that in your budget here?
For just the staffing position. We don't need internet over there. We don't need.
No, I mean, no, why I said, did you put down there that like your new person? I'm on page 23. I don't see it.
Look on the computer. Yeah, that was one that I emailed about because the original person that we'd sent the budget stuff to was out ill and it wasn't turned in timely and so what we advertised is different. That's the numbers I just put on the screen.
We had a board member that had some health issues, so some things got missed. They stepped down unexpectedly, so we were playing a little bit of catch-up there.
So you'll need that salary plus insurance, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. That's what the question mark there. We weren't for sure.
Yeah, I didn't know how to value that. I wasn't sure.
That might be another value there.
Is that on a different page here?
From here.
This is part of what I emailed. If you look on your screens, there's the current, these are what they actually wanted, but that's what I had advertised because I didn't have this in time.
Okay, okay.
Tara, do you want to talk a little bit about some of the roles, responsibilities, some of the things that this person, you know, how we would manage this? Because we also have Vince, you know, who were housed in the NRCS building as well. So it affects not just the state, but the federal level of what we do to.
Yeah, well, that's a little more how it affects the federal. I want to speak for him.
So Soil and Water was developed based on, you know, the Soil Conservation Service and district conservationists placed throughout the state and throughout the country. However, they put a federal employee and a county office and it was hard to get customers in. So they developed the Soil and Water Conservation District, something local that had connections with people to advertise, promote, educate, and get more customers in the building. So currently, our office is, through the programs that I work with federally, is just under $850,000 coming in through that door. This year, we paid out $261,000, no more. 26 contracts impacting 2,254 acres of land in Fayette County. My goal with assistance, you know, because I'm out in the field probably 50% of the time, so I can't answer phones, you know, the doors are locked, nobody else is there. And my goal would be to get that number over a million, if not close to 2 million, with about 40 contracts, you know, a year and rotate that. Typically, contracts are on three-year average, but they can go up to 10, you know, just depending on how they finish the contract. So with assistance and educating and having somebody there, that allows me to not try to fill that position as much as I am right now. And really reach other people and provide better service to the customers that live in our county.
I'm going to ask a very dumb question, but I'm known for that, okay?
Okay.
When does Soil and Water come in? If I'm a farmer or have land and I'm wanting to change the use of it or something, or that's when you would come in and say, no, you can't do this, or you need to do it this way?
Right. Just basically, you know, this is my problem.
I'm going to put a pond on my farm.
You want to build a pond on your farm?
I've got a farm, but that's not the point.
Right, right. So if you have a water issue, then, you know, we can help with anywhere from hooking up to municipal water sources, setting water is out for livestock, you know, rotational grazing in order to, you know, you've got problems, we want to increase your profits as well as addressing the resource concern with the land, okay? If you've got erosion problems, you know, how do you fix it? Well, you know, our designs are on a 10, you know, built to last for 10 years. So every 10 years, you get a storm event of this magnitude and that practice should withstand that event.
Where was Soil and Water when Christopher's house fell into the river now by Everton?
Yeah, yeah. So that's another thing, you know, if people have a problem and they need to know who to contact, DNR or IDIM, what permits are.
Army Corps.
Army Corps. They call the office. They stop by, they have questions. You know, we have some well testing kits in the office and people constantly asking questions about that.
And you know who to contact to do the preventive maintenance that's necessary to do side visits.
And there's things too, like NRCS cannot do, but the district can go after and get those funds as well. So there's log jams or something, there's some, you know, grants, they can go after. That money flows through them. Sometimes if there's natural disasters or whatever, that money can flow through the district, they can go after that versus, you know, maybe NRCS can't, you know, go for it. So it's very much a partnership. We all work hand-in-hand with all those, Army Corps, IDIM, DNR, and the Statesful Conservation Board. We have NRCS. We're all a great big partnership. And we're really lacking here in Fayette County, not having that local input in that level. The board is doing an amazing job, but they've got their own jobs to go and do.
To that end too, Bob, I'll add, because most people, when you hear Soil and Water Conservation District, you think only farm ground and that simply is not true. We're also extremely active in the urban and the city areas because people don't realize their impact when it comes to rain barrels, invasive species. People don't understand they're planting invasive species and they're landscaping and that's destroying the natural woods locally. So we do a lot of education and again, examples of that. They can do pollinator plantings instead of mowing grass that benefits the environment. So it's more than just farming. I know that's where the magnitude of the land is, so it's the easiest one to go get a big impact, but there's so much more to it than just farming.
Well, you should be contacted. I want to start a subdivision.
What's that?
If I want to start a subdivision, that would be something that you'd probably look at to make sure.
Potentially, yeah, absolutely.
And I've done that, run floodplain maps for people that were interested in building a house, you know, they needed to know where to enter your floodplain.
All the graveyards have been moved and.
We do a lot with cultural resources and threatening endangered species as well, tree plantings, seasonal high tunnels, helping people grow food, you know.
No snail darters in the way.
What's that?
No snail darters in the way. Okay, okay. So your actual budget's just under $50,000 if you're looking at hiring a full-time employee?
Yeah, like 37, 9.
Say that's probably close.
I'd add 48.
Full bin number is, but that's probably close, yeah.
I would add in bits, yeah.
Any questions?
You know, it's, I guess that's another thing I want to mention is with being part-time, it's like we constantly have a revolver, so then we have to get more background checks, retraining, some to do.
Is it hard to train Purdue graduates?
They come in already very knowledgeable.
Oh my lord, you know, some of them.
It's the new people that we really have to explain it over and over and over.
Oh, she'll be ruined now. She was smarter than me the day she was born. Okay, well, thank you for coming in.
Thanks guys for hearing us out and give us a call if you have any other questions.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thanks, Jim.
Tail and nail. Uh, here we go.
Page 10.
Thank you, ma'am. On page 10.
That's actually not incorrect.
Yes, yes it is.
He takes up two pages right in front of you.
This will be the talking today, Tracy.
Will we? Are you sure?
Yeah, go with it.
I know who. This is for you to do, like you always do. Yeah. I'll get her, I'll get her deck, please.
She likes to see me get slapped around.
No, I don't.
Where would you like to start, gentlemen? Talk with Babe, correct? Page 10.
The commissioners want a raise?
Well, we'll only put that in there for Dale Muster. He's such a hard worker, you know.
Yeah.
But it's a small one. You might have saved your life one day, Christopher. Shut up.
That's right.
You guys asking for a raise? A thousand dollars, 1,000?
Yeah.
Do you want me to just go down through the list or you do some explanations? I think best thing, if he might have any questions, what do you think, Bob? You're the leader.
Well, well, obviously, most of the stuff is pretty much in line with last year's budget. Half a billion dollars for the repair of equipment, the boilers for the courthouse and the jail. You need new boilers?
Boilers.
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 Yeah, boilers. $500,000.
That's, that's totally an estimate, Bob. I do have some quotes here Josh has managed to come up with. I have one quote here. For a to replace boiler for $89,251. And the two boilers that we have up there right now were installed in 2004 when this new addition was built. And one of them hasn't been running for several months. We've had to rob parts off of it to keep the other one running. So we're getting, we're limping by on one boiler right now. And you'll need the winter. Yeah, and winter's coming and we really do need to have two going. So the specs for the boiler that Josh would like to buy is, of course, a more modern boiler and has more efficient features and that sort of thing. And these things are not cheap and you can't order it today and get it tomorrow either. So that's one of, one of the things that we need there. So.
But one's working, one's not.
Right.
So you're really looking at replacing one right now?
We're dependent on one boiler right now in this building.
Yeah.
And will that take care of this winter? Want more of them?
Yeah, one boiler will do it as long as it don't shut down on us.
So you need, we only need that spare.
Yes. Was one, are the boilers all here that serves the jail too? Don't they have their own system?
Jail has its own system.
Okay.
And, and there's boiler repair and replacement. It needs to be done over there too, along with a very large water main.
And that's not part of this happening, is it?
Uh, yeah, I would consider that part of the request. And there again, you can be assured that if there's anything that we don't need, none of that money will be spent.
I, I believe that, Dale.
But we've got a boiler over at the annex that was installed in 1963.
And it's still running?
It's still running. I'm along in this job just like it always did.
Well, most boilers, the last 30 or 40 years.
Well, they don't build them like they used to. I can tell you that for sure.
Broke my back on two of them.
We also got a report from Josh on all of these buildings. I printed this out and all of the needs that he knows about. And you can see, and we, I don't know, you guys have probably had anything like that, but I'd be willing to like look at it and go over, look at it, and I've reached in it, but.
Do you think with these boilers today, how long would it take for them to get it?
I don't know what the lead time on one of these is right now.
You know what, the fourth store's winter, but it'll be done.
Yeah.
Now, we have installed a filtration system that we didn't have before. Kept all the. Conscious stuff out of. Yeah, the impurities out of the, out of the system. That, that is. Probably should have been done when they were first putting in, but.
Yeah.
I don't see any problem myself with that boilers. How about you, Tim?
I don't know. I'd like to do a little more investigating, but they won't let me. So I guess I don't know.
Well, moving over to the next page, I know we need to tuck, tuck point the courthouse. The annex needs a new roof. And we're estimating a million dollars for that?
Well, there again, I've got so far one quote. Company that does tuck pointing. And their, their quote for tuck pointing the courthouse, at least the 1890 section of the courthouse was $609,000. While over here, they also took a look at the jail annex across the street. Due to minor tuck pointing and bricklayer fare over there. And their estimate for that was $49,860.
That's just one quote, right?
Yeah. There's not a whole lot of people in that business, does it not, Lord?
Where, where'd these quotes come from, Dale? Can you know? I mean, I'll hand.
Well, the tuck pointing came from Wells Masonary.
Wells.
It's the same outfit, but they're from New Palestine and they're currently working on St. Gabriel Church.
Oh, okay.
The boiler quotes came from North Mechanical.
Where are they out of, do you know?
Richmond.
Richmond? I bet Craig Free Wagner's out of business over there, aren't you? It's been a few years ago.
You only got one quote on the boilers?
Yes, that's all Josh has so far. And Tim, too, this is the company that gave us this. We have a, we have a service agreement with this company. And, you know, we've been doing business with them for quite some time. That, you know, that doesn't say we shouldn't, couldn't get another quote, but.
Dale, all the, all the industrial people I've talked to, and I've talked to several, about North Mechanical, North Mechanical is the highest in the area. And why we, why we won't go look for cheaper pricing, I don't, I don't understand.
Tim, Tim, do you have any names of people that do this other than that?
No, but I could get them.
Yeah, we need to have that, so we can check for it.
I can get them.
Okay.
You know, I'm with all the industrial people around here that use these mechanical contractors, yes. Would love to make it.
We used to have contracts and service with Johnson Controls. They became the most expensive information. And we got away from them and, you know, dealt with North Mechanical. And I think North, I think they have gone through some changes over the last few years. I don't think things are the same as they were five years.
Changes being what?
In the way they do business, the way they charge.
I know Reed won't use them.
Yeah, I don't know.
Because they're, they're too expensive.
Do you know who they are?
I know Hydro won't use them because they're too expensive. Couple of the contractors I've talked to don't remember the name. I could go back and get the names. Won't use them. Only level quote.
If you've got any alternative suggestions, let us know.
Because technically, I think we're supposed to get three bids anyway, so we aren't just going to go with the one.
Three if you can, three if you can get them. Sometimes you can't get three bids, you know.
You know, it's, I've been in the maintenance business for 50 years. I've tried for two months to talk to your maintenance man. He avoids me. Has he been told to avoid me?
Sometimes I can't find him either.
For two months?
He's, sometimes I've found him laying on the floor with his head up under a sink.
I don't understand that.
You know?
But I mean, for two months, I can't even get a phone call. This has, this has been my career with maintenance. 52 years. I've crawled inside many boilers, welded on them. Lots of experience with boilers. Lots of experience in all kinds of maintenance. I run a crew right now that travels three states doing maintenance. I would expect that you guys could possibly respect that a little bit for some advice?
I didn't know you'd done that kind of business.
Done it for 52 years.
Well, if then if we asked you for a quote on this boiler?
I can't quote it because it's conflict. But yes, I could. But I can, I can be another thought on maintenance repair. Do I know it all? Perhaps, look, I'm hot. I've got burners in my shop that are 250 million, or 2.5 million BTU. I service them. I've had water heaters with thousands of BTU burners, furnaces with BTU burners, thousands of BTU burners. I've serviced them all. Myself for many years. We, we tear down huge presses and revamp those presses and put those presses back together. Hydraulics, we do. Been in it all my life since I was a teenager. I can be of some, not too much on home, but I can give some good advice on maintenance then.
Appreciate that.
Be more unhappy. Don't know it all.
Well, the immediate need is the fact it looks like we're going to have to replace a boiler. I mean, if we try to run on one, and that's for the courthouse alone?
Yes.
Well, we've got two boilers heating this courthouse. One can do it, but it may break down.
You never know when a piece of equipment's going to fail.
Why, do they work an alter in the dash or something and keep them both going at one time?
Normally. We're only running one at a time.
Yeah, that's what I thought, okay. But we got a backup boiler, basically, that we need to have.
Yes, I think that's fair.
Tim, we need to find companies, boiler companies that can put.
I've already been online searching.
Okay. Well, we need to at least get two or three bids to see what it costs.
Sure.
Yeah.
I'll go look at them.
I don't know, but a million dollars seems like a lot of money. I've never had that much, but.
Well, there's nothing. There's nothing that's what we would call cheap, but I mean, if it is cheap, we would still say that's a lot of money.
Yeah, I know, I know.
So is that a cheap price? We don't know?
We don't know.
What's next?
You got a tough job, Dale. I know that. The piping, they're saying you're replacing the PVC piping now?
He's talking about Josh's report. That's what he did.
Yeah. What did they have before? Galvanized still?
Honestly, I don't know. I, I feel like it'd be helpful if Josh were ever meeting when we're discussing those things.
I'm sure.
I know copper PVC don't clog up. The galvanized can pretty. And usually what causes it is the electricians to put their ground wire onto the piping. That's what messes it up a lot of times.
Josh is very, he's wise with that, he's done that work too. I don't think he's doing it here, making decisions that are unwise for us, because he kind of very much cares and has helped us tremendously since he's been here. Get things taken care of and just like that, you know, he's able to show a list of things he's working on or knows he's done. It's not what we had previously, so.
He is a good guy.
Yeah. And I'm sorry, it seems like he's avoiding that.
Well, it's been two months, I've left messages at the jail. He's told me he would meet me. And I can understand when things come up, but after two months, something's not right. Creates a suspicion that he's been told to avoid me.
Well, I don't think he's normally telling to avoid you, but I think what Josh knows is that he answers to us.
I understand that.
He did tell me that.
I understand that.
So I think that's where it may be better if he went through us to get to him, and then we could tell him you're coming. That might be a better profile there for that, to take care of it better for you. I mean, that's what I would do, where I've been previously.
Just left a suspicion.
Okay, any more questions on that, Tom? Make the move to page forty, don't you?
Back, back to this courthouse tuck point and annex roof. Do you don't know what the difference is there, what the roof is? What the tuck point is, the difference in those two costs?
I just told you what the tuck point was.
I did, I missed it.
Six hundred and nine dollars.
The tuck point, the courthouse, are everything.
Just the courthouse.
And then it was an additional for the whole jail annex.
Something like fifty thousand.
For the?
The annex is forty-nine eight sixty.
Fifty million.
Now, Dale, we talked about tuck point, they talked about repairing loose bricks and the whole thing? You and I have talked about that.
Yeah. That, that building was, was tuck pointed and repaired in the early sixties, I think, nineteen sixty, sixty-one.
Really?
Too long in there, yeah. I've got an old photograph of the work that was being done. But I haven't had time to go through the records to nail down the exact dates. So I know the work was done then. And at that time, that brickwork would have been, well, if it was nineteen sixty, that brickwork would have been seventy years old. So here we are, twenty twenty-four, and it's ready to be done again. And that, you would think it would last longer than that, but it hasn't.
No.
Water destroys.
It does, falls out.
I mean, it's something that's got to be addressed, because it does nothing but deteriorate what's underneath it if it's not addressed.
Well, at the end of the day, Tim, it's all about money.
Oh, I understand.
And you either got it or you don't.
I understand.
And if we don't have the money to take care of these matters, it's, it's not the cause we're negligent. So we depend on the council to fund our needs. If you can find a way to do that, fine. If you can't, we wait.
Like I said, it's the waiting that bothers me because of the continued deterioration. I understand, I understand.
It's kind of a deja vu because you need us and we need you, because we can't move until you do a lot of things.
Well, it's twenty-two.
We're still on a rebound really from the breakdown, like, ten years ago, when everything was really bad here. And so a lot of things were kicked down the road because it couldn't be done.
Yeah.
So we're at a place now to start taking care of things.
Well, the boiler definitely needs to be addressed, we don't want our courthouse people freezing to death in case of a second boiler breaking down. The tuck pointing needs to be taken care of, but...
Maybe bits and pieces at a time.
Yeah.
Well, fellas, I have turned that job in as a ready-for-a-ready grant twice. And it goes nowhere in the storying process, it doesn't even get to the next level. So I, I, you know, I've kind of given up on trying to get any grant money for that. And the state has grant programs for restoration and preservation of historic buildings, except those owned by government entities. So, you know, they've just shut us out completely on that sort of thing. It's done, it's us to do it.
Hmm.
I've researched as well as I know how to try to find help with that.
Well, that's concerning.
Well, we know what we gotta do, it's just gotta figure out how to get there.
Yeah.
Any other points of interest you want to talk about?
I don't have any more at this point.
Your service contracts, is that like the meals for the jail, things like that? The hundred and sixty thousand?
No. We, we have a number of service contracts, and I would, I don't have all those in my memory, Bob, but the auditor can pull those things up for you and then list them for you if you want to know.
Well, I'm not questioning the amount, I just want to know. Do you have to contract when you fix the plumbing, do you have to contract the people for that, or? You just call them when you need them?
No, we really don't. We used to use local plumbers quite a bit until we hired Josh Jarboe, and he's pretty handy at plumbing, and he has done virtually all of our plumbing since he's been here.
Yeah. Yeah, that was a good, a good hire. Okay, well, we move on to page forty. No further questions?
Page fifteen, that way.
What is it?
Fifteen. It's pretty well.
That's, that's an extra duty commissioners have pertaining to county drains and drainage problems. And you might note for twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, there's been no money expended there. We haven't been paying attention, we don't know if we would have been paid.
So that's why we're asking for a raise.
Yeah, we might not have even been paid.
Well, that's a good volunteer job.
Yeah.
Had all kinds of volunteer jobs.
I could be doing that on purpose. I don't get paid to attend those meetings, why should you?
Fair enough.
That was a joke.
If Jane don't get paid, nobody gets paid.
We just have to go to that person and get her paid.
Yeah.
It's on the bed.
Okay, now we move on to forty.
Who are we doing with? Courthouse building, page forty, forty?
Forty, yeah.
Courthouse.
Courthouse?
Cune courthouse.
Page forty. Well, compared to a million dollars, that's not bad, Dale.
Now, that, that Cune fund for the courthouse there, it has a very small levy and it never doesn't generate much revenue, so we, we don't rely on it much.
Any questions? Number forty-one, jail part?
Cune jail is another one that has a very small levy. We, you know, if it, if it had its due, if it would have a large enough levy to take care of all the building repairs at the jail. The only way you can do that is at the expense of levy for county general. So county general being the main, main thing, I, I don't think it's likely you want to increase the levy for Cune jail at the expense of county general.
Well, you're going forty thousand more than last year. Many repairs to the jail, that's where your main expense is, right?
Right.
Are those underway now, Dale, a lot of them, the repairs?
Repairs?
Yeah.
Things are constantly on a state of repair. Josh, you, you got what's your front burner item today?
Right now, Shawn Wilson's here, they're repairing the roof, it's been a constant issue for years. Shawn Wilson's here, he states that we don't need a new roof, that it just needs a few past jobs, but I feel like that roof has become nothing but past jobs, along with probation. But I've been slowly repairing, because we've got the flush system in each cell, and when that was put in several years ago, that was like a million dollars just put in. That was them coming and putting it in and installing all that. Well, now you got all the ceiling loads and controllers that are going bad, so that's another big ticket item. Compared to a million, with all the parts, I can do every single cell for seventy thousand. So, which is outrageous, but I mean, that's a, over a hundred. Wow, seventy-two toilets, I think it is, something like that. And then also the locks, the door locks. Just a constant issue. So we're gonna have to preferably get with whoever's installing the ones that over at the new facility. And try to go on with those same working mechanisms. It's just a matter of getting the parts, because the company that was, that we were going through is no longer in business. It's a standard lock, I mean, anybody can make it, but it's the, the inner workings, the, the magnetic system, there are a lot of them are failing throughout, so... But there's three big ticket items, and then I also was letting, I told Tracy in an email about the PVC pipe changeover, because all those pipes downstairs have been there since the, the jail was built. And they're built up, I can barely, some of them, I can't even stick a broom handle through, so.
Those galvanized pipes you're talking about?
Yeah, all the plumbing that's downstairs, yeah, it's all the lead piping.
Lead, real mine.
So it's eventually gonna, I've been doing section by section, like, whenever it's real bad, I've been replacing about ten to twenty foot at a time, but eventually it's in the long run, it's all gonna be changed over. Those jumpsuits get hung up pretty good on those.
Is that in your budget, Dale?
I would consider that part of the overall appropriation for any, you might make for any private, any building.
Well, we appreciate what you do. Finally got the courthouse insulated, didn't we? That was a job, wasn't it? Any more questions? Let's move on to operating expenses at the courthouse. What page is that on?
Looking at cumulative capital development.
Do what?
Are you looking at cumulative capital development?
Okay, what page is that on?
Forty-two.
Forty-two.
Fund eleven thirty-eight.
Yeah, okay. We covered that with the IT guy too, didn't we?
Some of it is for him and some is for the commissioners.
It all goes out of the commissioners. Okay. Any questions on that? We covered one for the IT guy.
Fund eleven twelve is on page thirty-five.
Thirty-five? How do you know all this stuff?
I could note.
Okay. That's the courthouse operating expenses, is that where we're at now?
Um, county share economic development.
Page, you said forty-five, didn't you?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five.
Okay, we're there.
That's right. Okay, I got that.
There's some sort of typo, some error here, I think. Are you on the economic development, Dale?
Yeah, and, well, no. Fund forty-nine oh three, we're not looking at forty-nine oh three. This is eleven twelve, so what was the total, forty-six? Yeah, okay. Fund eleven twelve, what we're looking at, you know, that matches up to what we had in our capital.
What page are you on, Dale?
Page thirty-five.
I'm on that too, that's economic development. County share.
Yeah.
Dale, the money we give to economic development, how much do we give to them? Eighty thousand?
Uh, next year, we've, uh, we rolled in one hundred thousand.
How much does the city give to them?
City does not contribute. They have it for a number of years.
That's unfair.
I would agree with that.
That's unfair, you know what? The county's paying the whole bill there. What do they do with their money?
That would be a question for them, I'm...
It's just my opinion, boy.
How much money does they, they have? They're sitting on a pretty good pot of money, aren't they?
Always take shares, my boy.
Right now, I don't know how much money they would have in cash. If you, if you consider their, their entire assets, it sounds pretty big, but you've got the value, valuation, the real estate that's there and everything. As far as working cash, it's not all that much.
A few years back, I thought they had like a million dollars cash.
Probably what they've got.
But I, I still don't see why we're financing the whole deal.
I don't see why we're financing it at all, from what I see we get from it. Maybe I'm not seeing something, but...
No, you're pretty accurate, Jim.
You know, the whole community come to me and ask me, "Why are you financing economic development?" And we're getting nothing from it. I can't answer.
Well, Tim, that's a hard, hard question to answer sometimes, but I know economic development efforts are frustrating.
I'm sure they are.
But the, it's, it's a game that we, you either play or you don't. And if you don't play the game, then you're sending the rest of the world the message that we give up.
But your leadership needs to be a good player. There are good players and there are bad players.
Well, I'm sure there is.
And I mean, I, I have the feeling that our leadership in economic development is not a good player. And I think the whole community has that, that same opinion. I haven't found anybody in this community, and I've talked to a lot, that has any confidence at all in our economic development director.
I wish Scott was here, because he's on that committee, but the fact is, in some of our grants, you gotta have an economic development committee to get the grant, don't you?
Yes, you do.
But you don't have to have a director, you can have a committee.
I, I agree, Tim, I'm, I'm not arguing with you on that, okay? I'm just saying, you need, you need to have one.
Sure.
Where the leaders are not, we don't know, okay?
If, if it's possible, we need to find one that we'll put forth.
I, I agree with you, Tim.
Hundred percent.
It can't just be a social club.
I think the reason that people will, uh, get an opinion like that is because they simply don't know what is being done. And much of what is done in the economic development realm, at the request of the people that they deal with, all, all that is kept in...
I understand that.
Confidence, they're, they're not allowed to speak about it publicly.
I understand that.
You're right, you're right.
But you look at... You look at Rushville, you look what's going on in Rushville, you look at what's going on, you go over and drive from Centerville to, into Richmond Industrial Park over there, look what's going on over there, and we have nothing. We have one opportunity that if you really investigate, economic development did not get that going, the mayor got that going, not the economic development. And we have one project, and they are building like mad on the west side of Richmond, and they're building like mad in Rushville.
Rushville would be the best comparison, because Richmond's got the interstate, which helps some of it.
Well, yeah, but still, but yet, and that we're, we're sitting here thinking about selling water to Rushville so that they can support those pet food facilities. They gotta have lots of water. We got the water. I have, and our economic development group got together and got one of those over here. We're only talking a short distance. We have the water. We got lots of water. Our economic development group cannot sell our water to anybody. I don't understand it. Number one resource we have to have is water. And we got it, and we got good water. They can't sell it. Why? They can't answer you why. Because they don't get out there and bust their behind trying to find somebody to sell their water to. And that's what you gotta do, you gotta bust your behind. And it doesn't happen. So why are we wasting a hundred thousand dollars a year on somebody that's doing nothing? Letting us sell our water to the neighboring county so they can build pet food? That makes sense. And I'm not, it's not your fault, I can tell you that right now.
I can't get to done greasing them.
You, you know, it's ridiculous. Building all around us. I don't understand.
Okay. Well, we'll go over that in our budget hearings. Any more questions? What's next on the agenda?
Forty-nine oh-three, page thirty-seven.
Page seventy-seven?
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven.
Attorney hearing made up.
I'm losing my hearing too, along with my sight.
In your hair, oh, I shouldn't have said that. Oh, that was all.
Courthouse operating expenses. Wouldn't that boiler come under this too?
This is operating, it's not really maintenance.
It's not maintenance, okay.
There's a little bit of maintenance in there, but...
Most of it is monthly operations, isn't it?
What's that property purchase wing?
Uh, that's just in case.
We're gonna buy some?
Yeah.
I've seen that.
The jail utilities, is this, is that what you're expecting it to go to? One hundred twenty thousand? Three oh four oh three at the bottom of the page.
Well, that's, that's an excellent, Bob, and we hope that will be enough.
What's the second line supervisor?
If we turn the heat off, that'll help.
Yeah.
The second line supervisor for fifty bucks, who, who, what's supervisor?
It's Josh.
Josh, okay.
Yeah, the services, have we taken care of that already on the record storage and maintenance? Has that been covered already? Give it to the quarters?
We've got everything at the, the old paint company, the record storage, he's asking, because we've got money still on the line. I left, I left in the notes that that's what I was in there from the prior year, was record storage and maintenance.
Yeah, we're, we're awaiting, uh, right now, a second quote, if we can get one for, surveillance cameras down there. We've got one. Michael Payne and I met with, uh, one of the local vendors on that down there. So we've got one quote, and he's trying to get a second one, hopefully maybe a third one if he can. So he hasn't presented anything, uh, needing simply the cause of that. So we're expecting additional expenses. As far as security goes, and also we have some, um, building, building matters to take care of too. Need to add a overhead door.
From the recorder's office?
No.
Okay, okay, okay.
Now, this is, this is storage area.
They previously restored in the basement of the jail, a lot of records. So they're working, we'll take it care of it, and now we're in a good secure place.
Have you got heat down there?
No, we haven't been using any heat. It's a very well insulated building, very solid, and, um... That going thing's almost air-tight.
Line three oh nine seven oh, a hundred thousand dollars for service contracts, we never spent more than sixteen, seventy-six hundred. What are we expecting on that?
I think that's where we stuck the, uh, uh, the EDG contribution.
Oh, oh, okay.
So we took it out of the bottom half of our capital plan, where it used to be, put it in the top half of forty-nine oh-three this year. A lot of these changes were made due to the fact that this, this plan or this set of appropriations will be the last time we have to make any payments for the city for our pool. Their, with this, their pool payments will be finished. So in order to redirect, edit money for other projects in the future, had to kind of scramble things a little bit, so leaving nothing to the city, leaving nothing there so the city has their, uh, their final pool payment. And that's it, we're done with that. So next year's plan will look even more different.
Okay. Moving on, are we going to debt service then? What page is that on, debt service?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six. And there it is. And you're saying this is the last year we have to pay that deal?
No. Well, I've done with that until twenty twenty-seven.
Heck, we might not be alive then, Dale.
I might not be alive tomorrow.
I know, I know.
So this is the annual payment?
Now, this is part, this is part of the, uh, payment that we make on this building construction that took place in two thousand.
But I mean, is this the annual, or is this...
I think, Jane, you make two payments a year, right?
Yes.
Semi.
Watch it again.
So we take another, there's another hundred sixty thousand that we take out of edit funds, uh, that, that goes with this to make our annual payments.
There's nothing we can do about that.
The good thing is, just a few more years.
They're not gonna come and get it if you don't make the payment.
You can be repossessed, Tim. Once they see you, they'll walk away, don't worry about it.
Once they see the tech point, Bill?
No heat. And if I remember right, Tim, we have, uh, refinanced those bonds twice in order to get a better interest rate on...
So, okay.
We're close enough now, so far we haven't been affected by current increase in, uh, interest rates.
Now, when you refinance, didn't that start that note all over for the term? In other words, if it was a fifteen-year note, and you go into it five years and refinance, you start over with a fifteen-year note?
No. All, all the refinancing did was lower the interest rate, it didn't change the...
Everything stayed the same, just kept right on with the lower, okay.
Yeah.
That's good, Dale.
Okay, public safety, what page we'd go to with that?
Fifty.
Fifty?
Fifty.
Fifty.
Yeah. So then, how old I wish I was?
Can you hear me both?
Exactly, there you go.
I can't remember when I was fifty, you still can. Okay, Dale, you need a half a million dollars. Page fifty, wanna go through that? They eat that candy bar anyway, I'll buy Sharon another one.
Do you hear a candy bar?
Oh, did you? Oh, it's nice. I watch your candy bar, never get to eat one. Have not come down with a family?
No.
I wouldn't get any of that.
There's no, no final decision has been made on any of this yet.
What's the donation to the hundred fifty thousand?
Feed to the fire, our county fire departments, be fifty thousand to each one.
What about vehicles?
That was just, uh, to replace vehicles as needed.
Ship, huh? Salaries?
So no, nothing for salaries and...
Two hundred and fifty thousand.
Oh, okay, 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 okay.
What salaries are we talking about?
Commissioners.
County?
For the, uh, public safety.
This is that new public safety, uh, tax, Bob, that the city put in place, and you guys voted on it also. And it's estimated, next year, you'll have fifty thousand dollars to appropriate in this. So no final decision has been made on any of this. But it, the, I, I think the auditor has shared all the restrictions and strings that goes along with this, where you're allowed to spend it on only certain, certain items pertaining to public safety.
Like the new jail?
No.
Turn it loose, you'll see that, public safety.
Well, but, um, similar in this process, um, commissioners and the council are gonna have to make some sort of final determination on this, and we've proposed this, this breakout of this money, just as a, a starting point for discussion. But at the end of the day, the final decision is gonna be yours, and I would encourage you to give this some very serious consideration, where and how to use this money. It can be, it can be totally blown and wasted, or it can be used in a way, and leveraged in a way that helps all employees in the county.
They've all asked for all of it.
I know that.
But it's, but it's restricted to public safety?
Yes.
I mean, not all employees, I mean, that's... I mean, not all employees. I mean, that's all public safety employees.
But i- if you use this money to replace line items in your general fund budget pertaining to public safety, that would allow you to spend more money in your general, out of your general fund.
For the rest of them.
For the rest of the employees.
That sounds good.
I'm, I'm not trying to do your job here.
No, but I mean, it's advice.
And this is only offering a suggestion.
It's good advice. As long as Jane knows how to do that.
She knows how to do it. Yeah, we don't even have to be here. We could just send Jane to the, okay?
So what I'm understanding here, if this is, if, if this is used properly, how, how, explain to me again how that can benefit the, the rest of the employees other than just the public safety?
By freeing up money that is currently being spent out of your general fund.
So, but then, but then would that be taking away monies that, in other words, the, the sheriff has asked for three thousand dollars? So what you're saying is if we take that three thousand dollars away and use this money for that, we're freeing up that three thousand dollars? Is that basically what you're, what you're saying?
Yes.
Sort of. I, I think I'm following you. But it would be easier for me to explain if I had to, um, print a budget out on the table and point here and there and say.
Well, I understand, I understand.
I can say, I can, I can help you out here for a second. Um, so if, if we took just the sheriff in the jail and gave them three thousand dollar raises, that's going to be like a hundred and thirty-eight thousand.
Yeah.
So if we pay those hundred and thirty-eight, those three thousand dollar raises to those employees out of public safety, then that's freeing up, we're not having to pay it out of county general.
Okay, I understand. That's, that's, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
And for some reason, I thought it was five thousand a raise.
If we went five thousand, that'd be two hundred and thirty thousand for sheriff in jail.
And sheriff in jail, nine-one-one. And then we're going to have to pay half of the EMS, what do they get, right?
The problem is with, with the jail, they're already behind.
Yeah.
So, you know, I, I, I couldn't hardly see myself taking away what they're wanting. I would see us adding to it with this. Whether that happens or not, I don't know, but.
Well, by the time you guys get done with your process, you, you'll, you'll decide on something. And we're not, we're not dictating here what, what has happened with it. But this is just a, a starting point.
Starting point, I, I agree.
Because we, we had to, we were required to turn something in to the auditor for this budget process.
Sure.
So that's what we did.
Okay. But that's not what we're going to see in January. It's probably going to see two thousand twenty-six, right?
No, we should see it in January.
The five hundred thousand? It's only been collected since October.
Will we see it all or will we see that much of it?
They pay us monthly. So, so they would, yeah, they, they should, like Friday, the DLGF reports are supposed to come out Friday. And so if they're on time, it will estimate what our mislane, what the lit will be. It'll just be an estimate, but on there, it'll, it will have an idea after Friday of how much we should get next year.
Yeah, we're getting four months worth of the taxes in January.
No. We should get a twelfth of the entire year's estimate in January. Like they don't send us, they don't send it to us how much they've collected. Like they'll estimate, this is what you'll get for the year. And then they divide, and they'll divide that by twelve and send us that amount.
So we could get a half a million come by January?
Get one twelfth of that, I believe.
Yes.
One twelfth of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. We don't get the whole thing.
Well, we're not sending the whole thing in January either, so it's spread out.
You're going to spend it, right?
Yeah.
Well, there are one, will come a time when we've collected for a full year.
But in December, we will get the last twelfth of that year.
Whatever we get, we'll finally use for it, okay? It was twelve cents.
You guys have got a lot of thinking to do.
Boy, that's hard to do.
And you've got, you've got one opportunity to get it right first time. And I, I really hope, you know, we're able to do that. Of course, what's right and what's not depends on who you talk to around here, I guess.
Well, we just have to stick with the intention of the tax, which is to, to help public safety. And I think it'd be good even with the volunteer fire departments, you know, um, to know, you know, handling what they'll have to come back, obviously, and request it again. This is the process we'll ever hear, as I understood it. So it would be something that, you know, we could see what they, what they're, what they can do. Like what they could do with that, you know? It would be good to know how this is helping. But that'll help people too to know, you know, if they say they bought or they're saving for certain piece of equipment or it's training or whatever it is, you know, that that money can be expended for. That feedback or report, whatever you want to call that, would be a good thing to have at that time. So we really know, you know.
Well, I, I, I think the, I, I think the volunteer fire departments deserve
Definitely.
a good portion.
Yes.
I do.
All they asked the city for was thirty percent and they got nothing.
Who?
Fire departments area.
County?
County. They asked for thirty percent and they got nothing.
I expected that.
Huh?
I expected that. Why would the city want to? We, we don't want to give money to the city fire department. Why would the city want to give to the county?
Because if the ci, if the county can't take care of my house on fire, the city's got to come out and do it.
And, uh, but that's just something they're going to have to deal with. But I, I live in the room, so, you know, that's my protection.
Okay, anything else?
Jane, did you got something else?
Well, we got you through it, Dale. If you're not going to get your ten million dollars, we'll do our best we can.
Okay. Do you need new stress ball? You need that.
Actually, yeah.
Is that your stress ball that?
We're down at two-thirds.
Wish you all good luck with your work. I know what, I know what you're up against. I did it for eight years and I know what it's like. But I think if you've got one thing to be thankful for, you don't have the problems that we had.
I don't like problems, Dale. I keep from it.
Yeah, I don't either.
Well, we appreciate what you do, Dale, and report to us what's going on. You've got quite a job too.
You'll be fine, Bob.
Yeah, well, thank you for coming in, sharing with us your wisdom.
You guys are done with us?
We're all done, both sides.
Tracy, can I, Tracy, can I have that copy of that? Make this list?
Yes. Is it down here? I don't know where it is.
Do you, is that the?
I gave you Bob.
Bob, I think that is.
Yeah, you're talking that. Oh. Am I putting it back here?
We need to set the next meeting date.
Yep.
This week.
Cut all these budgets in half. We'll be in good shape. Are we done?
No, as soon as we set the next meeting.
There's never been enough money to go around and there never will be.
And you go and bleed taxpayers so much.
That's right.
We've never got to the point yet of being asked to be in anyone's will yet either.
That's right.
Mike, are you back on? Are you there? He's telling us to meet in.
When you guys want to meet again, go over the budget.
Whenever you want to, Bob.
Next week? Start the next Tuesday, Jane? Five o'clock?
I, I can do whatever works for me.
We need to get off before.
We have a president, a presence.
Okay, gentlemen, next Tuesday, you want to meet at four, five, or six?
You tell me, I'll be here.
Five?
I'll be here.
Five o'clock next Tuesday.
Okay, so Tuesday, August twentieth, five o'clock.
What is that date?
August twentieth.
August twentieth.
Twenty-eighth. Wow.
No.
August twentieth, five o'clock.